Mr. Chairman.
Okay, at 7:06 PM I call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Let's start with a full call, please.
Marty King.
Roger Moore.
Chip Bassett.
Rich Canong.
Ted Redwood.
Okay, first order of business is approval of the agenda, which everyone received ahead of time. I would like to add, under item six, ordinance provisions, I propose public hearing for the Equestrian Center, can you sort of name these ordinance?
I'm not making a motion.
I'll make the motion. Now you can second it.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item is approval of the minutes of the July 13th meeting. Anybody have any comments?
I'm a little confused just on the way, if I look at the, at the minutes that were given out, there was only, they're just, am I missing something? Definitely not. I, what confused, what confused me was that the approval of the minutes for July 6th were on there spelled out and I got confused looking at it thinking, I'm looking at the wrong, the wrong seven minutes.
Roger Moore.
Roger Moore's. Any comments, Marty?
No, good.
Make a motion we accept the minutes as written for July 13th.
Okay, all in this in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. The next order of business is a public hearing for the conditional use application by Motorland. At 7:09, I've opened the public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on the application of the project? Okay, at 7:09.
You just had it done and walking out of these.
Were you here to comment on the Motorland?
No, no, I'm just, just listening.
Okay. Okay, then at 7:09, I close the public hearing. Now it is time for us to discuss the application by Motorland for a conditionally used permit.
Question, Chief Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just notice something. Chair, I'm looking at, we have Motorland and the Three Mile Collection. Is that something new? What are you reading from? Mr. Gabois' notes here.
I think it's a tag color, one of his previous.
What is the Miles Collection?
Collection of cars on the side.
Yeah, but I mean, it's applicant is Motorland that.
I'm, I'm looking. Get your question. Believe they have to have a lease agreement so they're both part of the project itself, right? Or at least they're partners or.
Partners.
Yeah, they're partners, sorry. Speak to the lawyer about that, not to me.
Yeah, why right there?
Yeah, they have a partnership. I say lease, I, I just, I was wrong, I don't really, don't know how they set it up. They set it up as a partnership.
Chair, application was from Motorland A.
Correct.
Correct.
Motorland LLC, sorry.
That's what I just noticed it.
I think I got that from a previous correspondence, I include that. Anyway, Motorland LLC.
Who, I, I guess this begs, begs the question of who, who owns and operates the facility?
Motorland LLC, I think.
Yes.
What is the Miles Collection?
There's no, it's Motorland LLC.
That's not legal.
No, it's not.
What's the partnership that Mr. Gabois mentioned?
Motorland Properties has two owners, myself and Miles Partners. It's, it's an LLC, it's just, it's not a partnership, it's a, they're both members.
Okay.
So I guess Miles Partners is, is partnership?
No, it's not a partnership.
It's a limited liability corporation.
Yeah, it's a limited liability corporation.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead, should be asking, answering my questions.
Okay.
I just, as a matter of clarity, that's why I asked.
No, I'm glad you asked it. Okay.
Yeah, so at last meeting, I know there's some, several things the plan board wanted to see, I believe I took care of those issues, they wanted a specification for the lights, I submitted those to Ted, and actually noted on the plan which lights were mounted where and what heights they mounted at. We did get a letter from Champagne Energy stating that it was installed so that trucks would actually drive over the installed gas lines.
Thank you.
Kind of made it a little clearer. Stormwater calculations, as I mentioned, Ted mentioned last time about whether or not the existing ditch as design could handle the flows, I ran the calculation with a hundred year flow, a hundred year storm, and the ditch was about a foot, foot for the hundred year event, so ditch is adequately designed to handle at least a hundred year flows for the site. The trailer was removed, so this is a new location of the trailer, hasn't taken out of the wetlands, and that showed the relocated area on the plan. I did have a storm checked in that was asked for at the previous meeting.
What was the added redevelopment areas to the plan?
And I added, yeah, thank you. I added, tried to add the redevelopment areas of the plan, redevelopment in previous areas, phase one, phase two, for a total of 36,576 square feet of redevelopment in previous area. That was asked for, I think, last meeting, and I should have that.
Rich, do you have any other comments, concerns?
No, I want to thank you for getting the letter from.
Champagne.
Champagne. And I do note that there seems to be an issue with parking. There are multiple vehicles that are parked on Route 1 at different points. That seems to be a problem. There shouldn't be cars parked on Route 1. Either customers or inventory that is there, there should not be anything parked on Route 1. It should be on the property.
I agree, and I, I understand that there had been some parking there during the construction, but we definitely agree with this and are ready to take whatever remedy we need to have. We'd never have stock parked there, some of the trucks there were some employees parked there, and we will get people who will just stop and park there.
You should put up no parking signs and tell people, you can't park here.
Yeah.
Because that create, it creates a serious problem for people trying to leave, because you may have to pull out into Route 1 and get taken out. Dylan Hollis did today, Diane Hollis blew through a stop sign and got taken out by an 18 wheeler. Up in Hollis, didn't say where, I just saw it on the news, they didn't, they didn't say exactly where.
If I may, we realize and recognize and agree with the parking, even like when we had to put the buffer fence up, if you recall, and the original buffer fence was right there, and it was serious visibility issues, so, you know, we would gladly agree to do that. I think some of the employee parking and stuff like that, that's, you know, and looking at this pickup truck and that, that shouldn't have happened, and if you have seen us over the past couple of years there, that's not standard practice, but I acknowledge that in the past couple of months with all the construction going on that this has happened, but it's not how we've operated in the past nor how we see ourselves operating in the future.
You, I know I went by there on Sunday and I know you guys were closed, so you may want to have a conversation with the yard sale, it's across the street, because there were a lot of their cars parked on your property.
Yeah, we were not.
In front of your property. Their property ends where that retaining wall is.
Well, the truth is.
No, no, it was, it was up, up across from.
The truth is, people go to the yard sale, pulled into our parking lot, parked in our parking lot to walk across the street. It's happened before, but that's a couple of times a year.
That's a year round yard sale. That's, that's, that's all I have.
Ted, you have some comments? Elaborate on, on what you, specific, specific for the parking, what you had recommended to the board?
I recommended, as Tim said, no, no parking signs being erected, and that directional signs should be placed at the entrance so customers know where to go to park, and that the customer and the employee parking areas be designated as customer, and that there's no stock that's stored in it. That probably will help a little bit alleviate the problem of people parking all over the place, because right now it's, it's chaos.
So if I make comment, I agree, but we do have a sandwich board with, you know, a parking, directing to the customer parking. We do have a sandwich board with a, you know, kind of service employee area, that's where we park, you know, don't enter, don't, don't go there now. And the definition of customer parking, we will have customers who will bring their inoperable vehicles, or their new vehicles, and, and park them, that's where they come in to drop them off, so, you know.
Do they drop them off in front of the big tent, or do they drop them off by the, in the customer parking area?
They will drop them off in the customer parking area. In, in park because that's where, that's where the sign tells them to park.
Agreed.
You know, known customers, you know, we're trying to designate the front as, you know, that's where the service area, so they'll park there. But I will have people who will drop off a car, they'll do a night drop. We're very vigilant about trying to keep that customer parking, customer parking, or visitor parking, I would say, people coming in to stop and then move, so if we do get somebody who drops off a car at night, you know, very common practice in our mode of, or they're coming during regular business hours and dropping off a car, we do try to get it out of the way as fast as we can so that we can keep that spot clear, and we're looking forward to, you know, being able to get a parking plan with, you know, we'd like to go ahead and come up with a plan, working with you guys on how do we strike the lot, so the display area is clearly designated, where visitors come in, because they come in that, that, that main primary entrance, that's where 95% of people will come, will pull in, even service vehicles, and, and they'll go to park right there. But in general, we don't have stock parked in that parking lot, nor employee or park there.
I just noticed, yeah, I did just notice there were, looked like stock, or maybe their customers dropping cars.
Yeah, we get a lot of that, like even just today, I pulled in this morning, there's raised towing dropping off a Mercedes, a vintage Mercedes from a client in Old Orchard Beach, and it goes right, right in the, in the customer parking, so we had to move it. And then in terms of the new bays in there, so I'd love some guidance in terms of what, what's allocated, how, how we need to use that space, because I honestly don't know what the, as I'm reading here, the, you know, whatever the setbacks or the.
It's just the, it's the, most parking spaces are 18 feet.
Yes.
And you need 24 to make a turn, you know, to, to back out of the, out of the garage.
Right.
And you only have 22, but I think it's given some of the cars you've got, I think, I'm not concerned about that.
Some of those cars are larger than the average car today.
Some are larger, but you've got pros who are doing that.
Yeah, so we're trying to keep that area intact.
Not a customer to do them.
In fact, one of the things pursuant to the conversation, we, we, you know, I want to put up some signs so that people, like literally stay out employee only, you know, service area, service technicians only, because if you even notice with the cars there, we were trying to park them trunk side, so that as people are coming by, they don't think that that's part of the.
The stock.
The stock inventory and they're walking, because those are client owned cars, and so we need to be extra cautious about protecting them from the, you know, the, the visitors and who are coming to the display lot, you know, on that.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm less concerned about that, I thought about that for a while and realized that your, your employees drive them into the bays.
Correct.
And then drive them out.
Yeah, and in fact, because most customers will come into the customer parking lot to drive it, drive it, and because that front service, you know, bay is narrow, like between the existing building and there, we have, you know, customers drop that off, and we try to get a technician to then move it into that space, because that's, I don't want visitors or showroom customers kind of driving or parking in that area.
Well, I don't have as much concern about that. If customers were dropping off there. With Catalinas or something, you know, or she would navigate, but, you know, a similar large vehicle in there that, that, they would have problems with negotiating that.
Yeah, and in fact, if somebody tried to do that, and our standard practice is now is like, you know, stop, let, let us do that for you, so you don't have to have the burden or the hassle or the worry about trying to navigate your old car amongst other old cars.
I'm, I'm happy with parallel parking, excuse me, 90 degree parking then with parallel parking, with parallel parking, you're gonna have to double, you're gonna have to double road, and that's, that's more, probably more of a pain than.
Yeah, that, that, that would be great.
But I don't have an issue with being too future, it's a problem for you guys in terms of negotiating and navigating.
Yeah, and then one of the other things, recognizing as we've been growing and we get more traffic, as you pull in, and we have the designated customer parking right where we're padded, previously, our display lot, what came right up to, you know, the, I guess the edge of the normal, you know, two, two lane thoroughfare. Our, you know, what we'd like to be able to do is actually decrease a little bit of the display lot, when we're able to move cars into the new building, and actually have, you know, and this may be part of a master parking plan, we need to work with you guys, but even for now, just have people park, so as they pull in our main entrance, instead of going behind the building and pulling to the right, we'll create spaces where they can pull in to the left as well.
Okay, you'd have to work with the, I won't speak for the board, but staff would be after work with the decisions, some of the decisions.
To the chair.
And then the, the car.
No, two thoughts, idea for guiding, okay? Get some old ribs, okay? Put a piece of pipe up, you can hang a sign, and you can move it where you need to. It's portable, so it's not anchored in the ground between weather and anything else. People will do look at signs sometimes along the way, all right? But at least it's give them a guideline instead of doing that. It's worked for me, okay?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, we're, we're actually, we have the sandwich boards, and.
Sandwich board is not, they aren't gonna look at sandwich board, because they always see it for a second. If you have it different spots, moved out farther along the way, they'll find the spot. It's like the chicken trying to find its nest.
Yes.
Okay, simple and plain.
Yeah.
Also along Route 1 there, simple idea, so they don't do anything, put some cones up, I mean, and so they can't stay there. I mean, you know, put them up through the day, and when you're done, suck them back in, so that they won't get walked off at night.
We, we do know, just from checking security cameras, people will park there at night, you know, Sunday it's Grand Central Station sometimes, and, you know, we're, we're actually seeing, we're gonna work with the legislature about giving some relief to auto dealers about Sunday operations.
Can't you just tow them away?
Pardon?
Can't you just tow them away? They don't belong on your property.
Well, the other, the other thing is too.
Well, we're, we're actually not allowed to be there on a Sunday, if you read the state statute, we, it, the literal words are, we can't have the appearance of doing business on a Sunday as a, as an automobile dealership, we're still subject to the, to the law.
But, but like I said, the other thing is even, you know, put, put your.
Yeah, the cones, I don't know, I, I like the idea of the cones, because I think they're bright and visible, and people know, know what that means.
Because, actually because along Route 1 there, that's DOT, that's up to, the sheriff can come across there, I mean, and for illegal parking.
Yeah, I know when we first moved in, we had talked to the sheriff about parking and that, like, so.
I'm just throwing out thoughts.
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, and, you know, clearly we would like to clear all that up as well.
Does anybody have any other comments or concerns regarding approval of the application?
Yeah.
Mr. Canong?
We've had a lot of discussion about impervious surface, but, and, and it appears that you're below the three acre threshold.
One acre, yeah. Three acres is.
The three acre total, you have what?
That's a lot.
You're probably about 20 feet below the three acre threshold, but nonetheless, you're below the threshold, which is the important thing. My, my question relates more to a DEP stormwater permit. We were told at the last meeting that because less than an acre had been disturbed, that, not disturbed.
Redeveloped.
Redeveloped, that you didn't need to have a DEP permit, but based on, on notes that we got from staff, it appears that between the buildings, the riprap stream bed, the detention basin, the building, additional parking, coming up with 54,000 feet, which is more than an acre, so my question, and we could, we could debate back and forth as to, you know, is it more, is it less? But I think, let's not go, go down that road. Would you guys mind getting something from DEP that says that there's been no increase in the stormwater?
We really have an issue with that, again, it's permed by rule, because what happened is if you've disturbed more than, and if you disturbed more than acre, but less than an acre of impervious, you have to get a DEP permit by rule for basic soil stabilization, so it's not really stormwater quality, it's stormwater runoff, you just have to say to DEP, it's a small project, the DEP still wants to make sure we're meeting basic soil stabilization, meaning riprap at outlets, you know, steel fencing being installed while it's in construction, so, so if you're under an acre of impervious, but over an acre of disturbed, that triggers a permit by rule.
But, 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 and this is over an acre of disturbed?
Depends how you want to calculate it, you know.
Right, and that's, that's my point, it depends on how you do the calculation.
Personally, you know, redeveloped area, pavement over existing gravel, I don't consider that redeveloped area. Building is a redeveloped area, detention pond is redeveloped area, any filled section always is redeveloped area, but when you take the two buildings together, and I, and I did include the detention pond, I first calculated that one acre threshold for, and I was very conservative on this impervious area, because I want to be conservative, so that if for some reason DEP called and says, how'd you do that? Well, I, I included impervious area that was created over existing gravel, and I guess I really want to try to add to the fact, paved over gravel, gravel's impervious, pavement's impervious, and I probably would do that if, you know, pushing the shovel, but, and I took into consideration this area here as pavement, as redeveloped area, just see to make sense to me to do that, so that's what I did. So, I feel pretty confident that this part doesn't require a DEP stormwater permit. At the very worst case scenario, it would require a DEP permit by rule, meaning I have to meet basic stabilization. You know, at this point again, the site's already constructed, everything's been done, site's pretty well stable, I mean, you look at it, the ditch, you did, I think they defined jobs, it's a good riprap, you hate the disturbed area, you hate that, you put construction detention pond, so the site's stable, it's not really causing any erosion problems, even sure before the pond was built, if you look downstream or downslope, I didn't really observe any sewer washing on anybody's property, so, but if that's something the board wants to do, it's gonna take another 14 days, first of all, I got Smithy application.
It's just that chapter 500 says that as of November 16th, 2005, we don't need the stormwater permit provided that DEP has determined there will be no increase in stormwater impacts as a result of the redevelopment, and that's for.
Again, that's, so what happened was, what happened was, DEP picked the year 2005, because they went back, I think, to 1996 at one time or something like that, and it was just, it was a nightmare. So they said, okay, let's pick a new date, because they changed the rule, DEP at one time they were interested in quantity, not quality, and then they changed the rules to now they want quality, not so much concern with quantity, and it gets so tedious that they said, all right, let's start in 2005. Any impervious area that existed prior to 2005 is grandfathered, you don't have to do anything with it. So in 2005 is when you gotta start collecting what you added for payment. So, in this case, this whole site was originally gravelled for vehicles, so, and you have to count, and DEP wants you to count redeveloped areas, so if you're gonna excavate this existing gravel pavilion, that's redeveloping, you're not paving over existing gravel. So, because, you know, they realize they have still, even from 2005, there's a lot of sites that have three acres of impervious area, because a site lot is three acres, so there's a lot of places, not just here, that paint three acres, so not sure the site a lot. So there's a lot of sites that, it's not just in Arundel, but in Softwood and all the special parks, so they said, okay, let's start 2005, everything else is grandfathered.
Ted, what specifically were you recommending?
I was recommending just getting a letter from DEP saying there's no change.
Yeah, I'm not asking for the purpose.
As a result of this.
Well, I know, but.
Only because of the, only because that's in the flow chart of chapter 500.
It's just, it's almost just as easy, and you go through the process and say, look, we're gonna write you a letter, at the same time, we're applying for after the fact permit by rule, because the party's already built, already stabilized, and already done. I'm willing to do that, certainly takes additional time to get that done.
Well, I think we could make that a conditional approval.
Yeah.
And then, you know.
I guess, you know, I'd like to see them be able to get an oxy permit.
That's what, so they say, it's conditional approval, but Chair, it doesn't say they can't, it's in the works.
Frankly, I'm off all next week, and then by the time I do the paperwork, and it is just probably a day's work just to put together the numbers and the plans and fill out the permit by rule application, it's not, I mean, it's a one page thing, but I need to give them the plan and the road control plan and show them what we had, even though it's after the fact, then they got 14 days to respond, so I'm off next week, by the time I get back, By the time I get back, it's gonna be a month at least before I get back to you. Just trying to let you know where I'm at.
I'm not sure that anyone is asking you to come back.
Okay, yeah.
I guess the time... As a condition of approval, you have to get a letter from...
I guess he's lying there, you guys realize it's gonna probably be a month before I can say...
Yeah, yeah, but we're just saying, just follow through it. That's what I'm saying, so it's not holding him up. I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's not holding them up, it's just perfect. Go play ball.
If it's a condition of approval, do we need to have a deadline? It's kind of hard.
Once we approve it, we'll get the final's effects.
You're playing with DEP.
Deadline in there, sixty days.
Yeah, I think it'd be one of those things similar to other places we've had where eight months later, they still haven't done what we told them to do and we've called them back here and said, "Hey, guys, come on."
Sixty days would be more than fair.
Yeah, I think so.
That's a chance to catch up on my work.
Yep.
Yeah. Then you can go, still have your week off or go smoke your cigar somewhere.
Exactly.
Okay?
Right.
Or do whatever.
That's everything I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is someone to make a motion?
I'm making a motion, we appreciate the findings of facts.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Why don't you chip for each of them? You want me to read it, Mr. Chairman?
Are we gonna vote on, did any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Yay.
Aye, okay. So we're going to have the findings of fact. I confess, I'm not clear on where the conditions relating to parking and this permit by rule fit in here.
The permit by rule would become number eleven?
That's not the issue.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Oh, it's already in here.
Okay.
Hundred, number two.
I mean, just put no later than sixty days.
Okay.
Sixty days.
Okay, and is the, okay, the parking, okay. Here we go. Town of Arundel Planning Board findings of fact and motion for approval. Motorland, I guess you should read LLC. Motorland LLC Amendment to Conditional Use Permit. I did, the name of this organization changed, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Motorland LLC, my mistake.
Right. Whereas on July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the Arundel Planning Board approved a conditional use application to construct a sixty foot by two hundred and ten foot metal multipurpose building with associated parking and loading areas, septic system, and stormwater drainage improvements at the existing Motorland showroom and service center located at two five six four Portland Road, tax map two, lot one, in the BI district. Whereas on February twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, the planning board reviewed an application by the applicant to permit recreational uses to occur on the Motorland site. During the review, the board determined that significant and unauthorized changes had been made on the project site that deviated significantly from the approved site plan. The planning board furthermore determined that these violations either had to be corrected or the applicant had to submit an application for revision to the July fourteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, conditional use permit. Whereas on March twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, the planning board received a pre-application to make revisions to the conditional, to the approved conditional use permit to include field changes, including increased wetlands filling, propane tank locations, increased parking area, modifications to approved detention basin, containment of a stream bed and subsurface drainage facility, and relocated utilities. Whereas on April twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, the planning board conducted a public site walk of the violations on the project site. Whereas May twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, the planning board provided the applicants with an inventory of items that must be included on the re-submitted conditional use application. Whereas on July thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, the planning board deemed the submitted conditional use application complete and scheduled a public hearing for July twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Whereas on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, the planning board conducted a public hearing in accordance with L U O Section ten, point six, point three, point three. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decisions. Findings of fact, one, the owner of the property is Motorland LLC. The property is located at twenty-five sixty-four Portland Road, tax map two, lot one, in the VI district. The property currently contains an automobile sales and service facility approved by the Arundel Planning Board on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, and currently occupies a classic auto dealership doing business as Motorland. A sixty by two hundred and twenty foot cold storage building was approved by the Arundel Planning Board on December tenth, two thousand and sixteen, and is currently under construction. The applicant proposes to remove the culverted stream and reinstall a riprap open channel water course between the wetland located on the western portion of the property and the wetlands located along the northern border of the property. Number five, the applicant proposes to install an enlarged two-chamber detention basin on the northern side of building number two, discharging into the wetland located on the northern edge of the property. Number six, additional lighting will consist of four one hundred watt wall packs located over the entries to the proposed building. Number seven, the applicant has installed two thousand three hundred square feet of additional paved area and proposes to install a one hundred and sixty square foot concrete pad for air conditioning units on the west side of building number two, and has installed two propane tanks in the wetland west of building number two. Number eight, the applicant proposes to run a new electrical line and conduit from the pole drop at the parking lot entrance in building number two. Number nine, submissions documenting their proposed amendments include amended site plan for Motorland sheets one and two dated February ninth, two thousand and seventeen, with revisions to July twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, erosion control details dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, and stormwater management calculations as prepared by Paul Gadboy, P E. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in accordance with the criteria of section nine point two point nine of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine point two point nine point one, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. Their proposed use is an expansion of an existing permitted use in the VI district and is consistent in scale and use with other uses in the surrounding neighborhood and the district.
So moved.
Second. Oh, sorry, any, I forgot, yes.
All in favor.
That gives you a breathing.
All in favor?
Yay.
Yay. Motion passes unanimously. Section nine point two point nine point two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan specifies automobile sales and service facilities to be appropriate in, and the use is consistent with the long-range plan for the VI district to serve as Arundel's premier industrial and business zone.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Yay.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous. Nine point two point nine point three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate significant generation, and the proposed plan will reduce pedestrian vehicle conflicts on the property. No changes are proposed to occur to driveway access or internal circulation.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion.
That the applicant will, as we talked about, for Route One parking.
That is actually in, on the next page, Marty.
Okay. I'm just saying, in and out, that's why I was using that section there.
Understood.
All in favor? Yay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. Nine point two point nine point four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The proposed use will require the installation of a new and relocated septic system. An H H E two hundred permit has been prepared of sufficient capacity to accommodate the additional employees that will be supported by the facility and the existing car wash facility. Existing water supply on the site is sufficient to meet the needs of the proposed new structure.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Nine point two point nine point five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, dust, and smoke. The nature of the business does not generate any undue noise, dust, or smoke generation outside of the structure. That should be, or not of.
Second. Mr. Chair?
Claire.
Mr. Chair? Claire, that's a thirty-seven watt, not on one hundred watt. It's an LED.
Okay, Claire. The applicant is installing additional thirty-seven watt wall packs.
LED.
With full cutoff shields that will not generate any dangers, Claire, for passing motorists or nuisance to adjacent properties. Do you have a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Thank you. Nine point two point nine point six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will require limited alteration of the existing site topography. Tree cover will be retained on the perimeter of the site. The installation of stormwater detention basin along the northern boundary of the proposed building will capture runoff from the proposed building and parking facilities, resulting in no increase in downstream peak runoff generated by the site improvements during a twenty-five year storm event.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what did Paul say? He said, "You checked it for a hundred year," or was that?
That's a stream bed.
Okay, that's not this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yay.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Nine point two point nine point seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Right.
Unanimous, okay. Nine point two point nine point eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of the land use ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed activities.
So moved.
Yep. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yay.
Thank you. Okay, therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions of the Arundel Planning Board... Sorry. Come on. I thought you said, pardon me. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the planning board hereby approves the amended conditional use application and site plan for the existing Motorland showroom and service center located at twenty-five sixty-four Portland Road, tax map two, lot one, in the VI district, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant cannot secure a certificate of occupancy until the code enforcement officer is satisfied that the building design meets all of the Arundel building codes, including use group separations for the multiple uses proposed for the new building. Two, the applicant shall produce to the planner a letter from the main department of environmental protection confirming... Confirming that the redevelopment of impervious surface on the Motorland site in existence as of November sixteen, two thousand and five will result in no increase in the stormwater impacts generated by the site in accordance with chapter five hundred standards.
This is, this is the sixty day.
And such letter will be provided to the planning board, no later than sixty days from today. Number three, the applicant shall install no parking signs along the wall facing Portland Road, lot one, and shall prevent customers and visitors from parking off-site along the road. Forgive me, should that say during business hours? Number four, the applicant shall clearly sign all areas of designated customer and employee parking approved on the July fourteen, two thousand and sixteen site plan and shall provide directional signage from the driveway entrance to these parking areas as approved by the town planner. Number five, customer and employee parking shall never be used to park or display automotive stock. Number six, the twelve employee parking spaces shall be designated on the record plan and signed to reserve it for that purpose. Customer parking area in front of the office shall be designated on the record plan and signed on the site. Number seven, there shall be no further disturbance of the diversion stream channel located in the rear of the property without first securing a permit from the planning board. Number eight, the existing car wash facility shall not be modified for public use and shall be restricted only for vehicles being stored, renovated, or sold by Motorland. Number nine, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued by the Arundel code enforcement officer until a town planner presents a letter bearing the seal of Paul Gadboy, P E, certifying that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans and this conditional use permit. Number ten, violations...
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Do you want to make a note there that, turn out that we have that? They can get an occupancy permit, but they have that sixty days. It's not gonna hold them up from an occupancy permit. That's what I'm saying is, we always said it would be sixty days.
It's no different than recording a plan with Dirk Kenny.
Okay, I'm just, I'm doing it. Yeah.
I don't anticipate a problem otherwise.
That's why I was just saying, it's not gonna stop them from an occupancy permit. That's what I was trying to go at. No.
It's a good point.
It is a good point.
You want to continue?
Yes, sir.
Ten, violations of the conditions of this permit may be subject to a hearing by the planning board and possible replication of this conditional use permit. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this twenty-seventh day of July, two thousand and seventeen.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
My only comment is, gentlemen, I hope that you stick with this plan and don't decide to change it again. Because I don't think the next time will be quite so generous.
So signing of the my law. I mean, I was having improvement of seating because I wasn't gonna be there. I didn't think, no, so I implied. I'll be good. Thank you.
When are you getting back for?
I'm just making a month or two weeks off.
So you'll be back on the town?
Yes.
Okay. Because I won't.
So I'll talk to Dad, I'll call him back, thank you. Thank you very much.
Enjoy your week off.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is, uh, new applications. Item number one, DuBois Livestock Inc. conditional use application, determination of completeness. Uh, I don't see, are there any representatives of DuBois Livestock here? Uh, the, yes, sir.
Couple of items. The, the first of which is that they were supposed to give us a completed application by July first of two thousand and seventeen. The second of which, we are under a consent decree order that tells us to ignore the land use ordinance, so we have, we have no reason to deny a permit if they meet the criteria of this consent decree. The third item, they're supposed to get a letter from the code enforcement officer saying that they are in compliance with the main D E P, read all applicable state licenses and regulations. The code enforcement officer has informed us that he cannot give us that letter because they are in violation of the main D E P. My fourth point is.
I'm sorry, I'm going to clarify, they, they have been given a written notice of violation.
Correct.
As of June twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh of the week.
Okay. Just for the record, I wanted to get that in.
And the fourth item is that they know that they're supposed to be here. This is not the first time that they have not shown up for a meeting where we have not been able to conduct business. Based on the, the violation of the consent decree, I want to make a motion that we deny this permit.
Let's take a discussion, I'll second that.
And for all of the reasons that I stated, we've been told that we have no choice.
As, as the chairman, uh, I'm not allowed to participate in discussion, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the consent decree and item one B, uh, says explicitly, uh, removes the land use ordinance from this consideration process completely. Uh, and, and has two, two conditions, which needed to be met by July one of two thousand and seventeen. The first condition is an accurate plan of the site. Um, we did not receive that. But much more importantly, they are required, DuBois shall obtain a letter from the Arundel code enforcement officer confirming that composting operation is in compliance with all existing and applicable state licenses and regulations. We, we, we have been told that the code enforcement officer has a, a copy of a written notice of violation, uh, from the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, that was dated June twenty-seventh of two thousand and seventeen. When we talk about what one of the options being to, to deem the application incomplete, um, I, I, I don't see how we can do that because these items had to be provided by a date certain, which is in the past, so the application can never be complete, if, if that's what we're looking for. And I, I'm, uh, mystified by the absence of any representatives of DuBois here, uh, but clearly they knew that it was on the agenda.
To the chair question.
Yes, sir.
The only thing we can say is, is that all aspects have not been met for it to the selectmen to do whatever they have to do from here on, because this is not in our hands, because they're, uh, because of the dissent decree, it will have to do whatever they have to do.
Well, the consent decree actually, in, in effect, orders this planning board, which was not a participant in the consent decree process, to issue them a permit if they meet these two criteria.
Correct.
But they can't meet them ever.
Correct. And, and I, Marty?
Yes.
I would say that the consent decree says that, that DuBois has to give the planning board the application because we have jurisdiction, for lack of a better term.
Yes.
Over this, so I think that it's incumbent upon us to deny the permit, which would then.
Because of its incomplete.
For whatever reason.
I'm just saying for that point, to make that point, because it's incomplete.
It is incomplete.
That's what I'm saying, it's for that point.
Okay. It's, it's, it's not that it's incomplete, they, they failed to meet the terms of the consent decree.
Yes, but that makes it incomplete, because.
No, it doesn't make it incomplete.
Yes, it does, Chip. What I'm saying is, is because it's incomplete because they did not meet the terms. Am I thinking wrong?
It, yes, because in, 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 incomplete implies that it's possible to complete at a later date, and it's not. July first came and went. So it, 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 incomplete implied, there, there, there's an assumption when you use that term, that it can be completed at some time in the future. This, this can never be rectified. They, 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 they cannot meet the terms of the consent agreement because July first is twenty-seven days ago.
Yes, but Chip, what I'm trying to get at is, this will have to go back into another situation, which will be possibly back to violation of the court decree.
But that's, that's something.
But not through us.
That's not on us.
That's, that's not our problem.
Up to the selectmen.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Referees save your motion, please.
My motion is to deny the permit.
Can I just appoint a clarification?
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is, is that this evening, I'm looking at the agenda and, actually, on the agenda is to determination, determination of completeness, because as I understand it, you have the determination of completeness and then you move on to an actual determination on the merits of whether or not it meets the substantive requirements of, you know, and, and of course, this is entirely up to you and I, I'm just here as the town attorney to talk about process and procedure. If you want me to weigh in on that, I will. If you don't, then I certainly won't, but, um, you know, I'm happy to, to discuss my opinions on, um, the process that should be used in this, to do a case.
My, my thought, my problem with this, is that as a planning board member who is supposed to be looking at the land use ordinance, I've been told by the judge at the board of selectmen, don't waste your time. You can't look at it, it doesn't count for anything. We can't, we don't, we can't hold a public hearing based upon this consent decree.
We can't have a sidewalk.
We can't do a sidewalk, we can't do any of the normal activity that we would do. Based on that, this is not a complete application. My move is that we just say, we deny the permit because the conditions of this consent decree were not met, and let the board of selectmen have it, and let them deal with it as they would. Our job is to look at this and say, does this qualify? And the answer is clearly no.
But your agenda says it's a determination of completeness, not the actual merits of the application itself. So all I'm saying is, is that, and, and I'm not denying or disagreeing with anything you have to say. Clearly, the consent agreement says certain things, it requires certain things, and whether or not they're met is entirely your decision. Seems to me, from the evidence we have here, the, the determination is probably a pretty easy one, but it, on the agenda talks about the determine, uh, determination of completeness. And if you look at the, the consent agreement, which I agree a hundred percent, you are bound by land use ordinance, that thing right there, it, you're not looking at that. You're looking at the consent agreement itself, and there are two paragraphs. The one is talking about that an application must be made by July one. As I look at Ted's, um, memo, that has been made by July one, they met that requirement.
They didn't.
No, they didn't.
They met the requirement of submitting the application, it was not complete.
Fair and, yes.
They did not give us what they were supposed to give us.
Understand, I understand that, and that is part of the determination tonight, is whether, I mean, I'm looking at this as a, the roadmap for your decision-making, is one, you determine that the application itself is not complete, or two, you can say, well, they file an application and then, and here's where I'm going a little bit legalistic on you, is that the second paragraph, so the first paragraph is, A, submit an application by July one for renewal. B, paragraph, it says the performance criteria in the land use ordinance will be deemed to be satisfied. Now, and that's where I know this is formalistic, but it's, this is where I'm going with this, is that performance criteria, in the, generally speaking, is a substantive analysis of whether the criteria are met. So one is application procedural, you know, you have to file your application. When you talk about the performance criteria, that's an analysis on the substance, can they meet the substance of the application? And it's then that you determine.
I got, I'm sorry, that, that last, you, you, you just stuffed a candle through the eye of needle or something.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Through the chair. Would it be better if I said that this is a two-part motion? The first part is that we deem this application to be incomplete, and the second part is that we deny the, the applicant the permit? Would that make you feel better? Because I'll be more than happy to do that.
Well, it's certainly not about making me feel better or not, I'm just talking about procedure and making sure that we're not, let's just put it this way, um, this consent decree, as you well understand, is the settlement of two, three, I think we're up about eight lawsuits, and so the reason, and the only reason I'm talking about this is to try to head off at the pass any other lawsuits. So I'm trying to say, okay, procedurally, let's give every benefit to the applicant.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I, the, cutting, cutting through the, whatever.
Hey, boy.
What, what I, what I'm hearing from you is that it's your opinion as the town's attorney that we can consider whether the application is complete or not tonight, but you're saying that because of the description on the agenda that we cannot reject the application, is that correct?
I mean, I think you can determine it's incomplete and because of that that you can't act on it, period, full stop, that's what you want to do, what you want to do.
I don't, I don't think that's what, well.
I mean, you can do whatever you want, it's your board and it's your determining.
That's not, that's not what, what Rich's motion was. Rich's motion was to determine it incomplete and.
To deny it.
And to deny the permit.
If, if I may, just a little, the, the term determination of completeness is a requirement in the site plan review process, and just determine, it's just a statement of, do we have everything we need to make an appropriate decision? And, and actually, you know, if we don't, you, I, I don't even know if we're supposed to use the, the site plan process. I mean, are we supposed to have a public hearing? Are we allowed to?
We can't have a public hearing, this tells us that they have, that if they submit the application with the two items that are required, they have met the land use ordinance provisions.
Well, no, the, 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 this, this court document renders the land use ordinance This document is the only thing we have to work on, and it, it's, it's four pages long, three and a half pages long. It's not complicated.
So do we say that according to the court document, things have not met the criteria? So we cannot do anything more than say no?
I don't, I don't think so, Marty. I think that for us, it's a pretty, it's a pretty straightforward, we, we either vote to deny the permit.
Yeah.
Or we vote not to deny the permit, in which case we give it to them, because we have no other choice on, on this consent decree.
What I'm going at is, okay, that the fact is, we see what's in front of us, we're using what we have along the way, and also using the reference as the court document, okay, which is presented, which has given us, uh, the other factors, and according to the court document, a permit cannot be issued or anything else, or even because they have not met the requirements of the court document. If it hasn't met the court document, everything, then it's everything for the other factors is null and void.
I, I just don't think that we have to state that as part of the motion. I think that's evident through the discussion that we have had, that that is the, the reason that we are doing so.
A reason I'm saying that is, so it does not leave a loop, okay? Because as loops, back door. We're following what we have to do, but we're also by the guidelines of the court document.
And we have to make a motion that the applicant is incomplete.
That's essentially it. So if you'll with, I'll withdraw my motion if you'll withdraw your second.
I withdraw the second.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll change the motion that we, we determine that the application is incomplete.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Yes, I would like to, to, uh, make a suggestion, which is.
Okay.
That it, it is incomplete and cannot ever be completed because the deadline in the consent decree has passed.
Okay. I will, I will modify the motion to reflect that.
Take a discussion, I'll second that. So the motion is.
The motion is that, that we deem the application to be incomplete because they did not meet the criteria of the consent decree by providing us with all of the required documents under section one B, one and two.
Ended at that.
Ended at that.
But there's no resolution to that.
Well, it, 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 it.
But that's the reason that we're deeming it incomplete.
We don't have to do anything more than that.
Well, it's not, then that's not in, that's not a final determination.
No, I'm.
So, I mean, the next motion, I think, if I.
That's correct.
If I'm picking up what you're putting down.
You are picking it up.
That's the next, the next motion.
Believe in ourselves open to litigation.
No.
No. Make a, vote on this?
Yeah, let's vote on the first one.
I'm sorry, did you just make? Does your motion include what I had added about?
Yes.
About it not, not being possible to complete?
Yeah. It did not say that it was not possible, it said that, that because they did not meet the criteria in one B, one B one and one B two, that this application is incomplete.
When Chip modified, he didn't say.
Well, I, I didn't modify it, I, I, I'm not allowed to, but I.
I know, I was.
I made a suggestion. You followed through on it?
I, I followed through with the town attorney's recommendation of stopping at that point, you know?
Okay.
Can you read it back?
I don't know.
Would you like me to say it again?
No, let me see, um, Mr. Ganong, motion, made motion, Mr., uh.
Lawrence.
I'm sure he did, it was Mr. Lawrence who did, yeah. Um, seconded motion, that the, that the application, uh, the planning board deems the application incomplete because the applicant did not meet the criteria of section one B one and two of the consent decree.
Dated.
Uh, dated.
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth, yeah.
Whatever date that was, two thousand and sixteen.
Now we take a vote on that.
Correct.
I'm sorry, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen?
No, no, no.
Sixteen, okay. Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Saying aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the permit.
We did, are we denying the permit or the application?
We've already deemed the application incomplete, but the application is for a permit, so I'm, I want to make a motion that we deny the permit.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
And just a point of clarification. Can you clarify for the record the basis for the denial? Again, I think we know what it is, but just to make sure it's in the minutes and the record is clear as to why that motion...
It's incomplete. This is an incomplete... According to the consent decree, this is an incomplete application.
Incomplete and cannot be completed.
And cannot be completed. There's no way they can get us the information by July 1 of 2017 at this point. And that was the date certain that was listed.
I'm not sure that's all right, but...
Okay. I just wanted to deny the permit, for whatever reason. Deny the permit.
Let me just... The clarification is, is that... And I understand, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think it's necessary to say "and cannot be met" because it wasn't given by July 1, because that actually provides more reason to fight. All you need to say is, if, again, I'm understanding the basis for your motion is, because getting your application in by July 1 was the first criteria. Then the performance criteria are, you got to have that note from the CEO, and you got to have an amended, excuse me, an accurate plan, okay? So again, I think you don't have to say "and cannot be met" because it wasn't given by July 1. I think the fact is, it just wasn't given. The consent agreement said it had to do two things. And honestly, I don't think you even have to go into whether the plan was accurate or not. I think you simply have to say that the code enforcement officer note cannot be provided because they are currently in violation of DEP rules, or so says the notice violation. They can't meet the criteria that the code enforcement officer give them... Give you the note.
My motion is to deny the permit.
For failure to comply with the consent decree.
For failure to comply with the consent decree.
And... You want a second?
I'll second that.
And along what Will was just saying, and also beside the consent decree, it's also going by the guidelines of the land use ordinance.
We can't look at the land use ordinance. It's irrelevant.
The reason I'm saying that is because according to the land use ordinance, you have to get a letter from the code enforcement officer.
But we can't look at the land use ordinance. The court told us not to.
Yeah, but to be clear, that that provision in the consent agreement that requires the letter from the code enforcement officer is taken from the land use ordinance. So it's a same.
Okay, I'm just...
Okay.
I'm not trying to close two doors.
Totally understand, yes.
Okay, then I'll keep my motion.
So we had a motion on the floor that the planning board is amused to deny the solid waste permit of Du Bois Livestock, Inc. since the applicant has failed to comply with the terms of the consent decree.
Correct.
Of June 26, 2016.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I make just one comment?
Yeah.
Not about Du Bois. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think I heard the chair say that the board of selectmen sent an order to the planning board to deal with Du Bois. Unless I am totally wrong, the select board does not, did not, and will not order the planning board to do anything. They would request the planning board to work on Du Bois Livestock. It was not an order, it was a request. And I'd like to see that one word changed from order to request. We did not order the planning board anything. We requested.
I don't remember what's in that.
Respectfully, I have to... Let me add, I've only served on the board for a year, so I don't know what happened previously. But the planning board had no role in negotiating the consent decree. Yeah, I'm sorry, consent decree.
I understand that.
And so then the consent decree sets forth in black and white what the criteria for issuance of a permit by this board are. Because this board is the one, is the entity that issued permits, correct? So I do understand what you're trying to get at. But in this case, candidly, my own opinion is what I said, that the selectmen and Du Bois Livestock and the attorneys negotiated a document that requires the... Had they met the criteria in the consent decree, the planning board would have been required to issue them a permit. Am I incorrect, counselor?
I think that's true.
It's something that we, as a planning board, had absolutely no say in. We weren't asked about it, we weren't consulted about it, and we ended up being told, if they give you these two documents, you will give them a permit. Without our doing the site walk, without our doing any of the normal things that we have to do based upon a land use ordinance that was voted on by the town of Arundel at the town meeting, and we were told, you have no choice, you have to do this.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about ordering and requesting at that particular meeting. And it was concluded by the unanimous board that it would be put in as a request, put a planning board to deal with it and work on it when it came forward.
But this is not a request.
Assuming that Du Bois came through with their paperwork and application completed.
And now looking over it real quick, in the set agreement...
Set agreement, decree.
Decree, okay. Does it say request, or that the planning board request, or review, or anything else for a new application, for other application? I'm trying to come at what Phil is saying, because the way they had discussed it, it would be a request, not like you said an order.
Marty, this says that the performance criteria specified in the land use ordinance for the issuance and re-issuance of all solid waste processing facility renewal permits at the site hereinafter shall be deemed to have been satisfied by the submissions described below.
Or deemed inapplicable.
Because of their grandfathered status. We have no choice in this. This was, as far as I'm concerned, this is an order that says you will do this. If A and B, if 1 plus 1 equals 2, then you will do this. You have no choice in the matter.
And furthermore, at the bottom of page 2, that does say that if they want to increase... They expand their operation in D and in David at the bottom of page 2, in the event Du Bois wishes to expand the volume of materials to be composed on the site, it must file an amended application to the planning board before doing so, which that does seem to be a request as opposed to an order.
That's after five years.
But that's five years if they want to expand. That's a totally different... My point is, that kind of language is not in the first part.
I don't know who wrote it out or how they wrote it. I know there was a lot of discussion about...
Phil, I take... I understand. I take your word for it. I was not there at the selectmen's meeting when it was considered, and I... Your comment is duly noted.
Does not order anybody to do anything. They request. So if you don't want to change that word, that's fine.
And something that's based on what counselors told us, we didn't have a choice.
We did.
And it may not have been the selectmen's intent. It may have been your intent that we would request this. But the effect of this court, of this consent decree is that we were ordered to do so. There was no request that we review it. If they had given us a map like they were supposed to, and the letter from the DEP, or from the codes enforcement officers that said the DEP had everything together, we still wouldn't have had to have gone through any motions. They could have come in, and we could have said, based on this consent decree, here's your permit, we're done. Because we couldn't look at the land use ordinance. We couldn't hold a public hearing, we couldn't hold a site walk, we couldn't ask for anything. We had to go by what this says. And this did not give us a choice.
Through the chair.
And so I understand what you're saying.
What you did, what you're doing. And apparently, there was two different understandings of what was intended.
This is what... Our attorney just told us this.
I completely understand, and one in the record that it was the intent of the selectmen to... To, I'm not quite sure what, to request... To make a request of the planning board. However, the legal document that was acted upon by the Superior Court, that there's no request aspect to it. And that's a product of the legal process, I'm sure.
Yeah, so that's where the difference came in. So I guess we all have to live with it.
Questions? Do we make any note of this being inaccurate? Because we don't know?
We voted...
I'm just asking.
We've already voted to deny the permits. We should go on to something else.
No, we haven't... Actually, we haven't voted to deny it.
Yeah, well, you have to...
But you were on the second, the second second.
You're right, I'm sorry.
The second second.
We'll need to believe in the planning for that.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Okay.
Thanks, good. I need to hold you on.
To item number two on the new application. Is it Ron Tu's? Okay, Ron Tu's Run Dog Daycare, initial use pre-application. No. You may even want to find that loop. Maybe want to find that loop. Mr. Planer?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to...
Oh, are we moved on to the pre?
We're talking about the...
We're talking dogs.
We're trying to get out of here on an early night.
Okay. Yeah, you have... This is a pre-application. The applicant wants to... This is our first application. You will recognize Chris, and she brought this to us in the very beginning, the idea of providing dog care services in residential neighborhoods where people could easily drop things off. In her case, she meets all of the criteria that, for a dog care center in a residential district. You can see the notes and the chart that are put together. There are some questions. She wants to have some waivers on the formal application, specifically on topo and a number of the usual things that we require. She has an existing facility, which is a basically equestrian, a small equestrian center. She wants to use part of that as a dog care center. There are residents nearby, they are off a bit of a distance. And the usual procedure in this is to schedule a site walk and go to the applicant's property, armed with misinformation and armed with what she wants, and discuss what we're going to need for further information in order to process her application.
In order to deem the application complete, correct?
Well, this is a pre-application.
Yes, a pre-application. So the standard operating procedure is we schedule a site walk, and we tell her what else we need for the formal application.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make the motion, we have a site walk on August 10.
I'll second that.
When's August 10?
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight.
And when time?
Six.
It's right down the road, so six o'clock? That time it up?
August 10, six.
Oh, you're making a motion, you're not going to be here? I know a lot of people who do that.
I won't be here until the 24th. But I figured we should make the motion and get that process started.
Yeah, because you got to make sure that all the other board members show up.
I will do my usual canvases. Six o'clock?
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor of holding a site walk at 6:00 PM at the site of Ron Tu's Dog Run? Run Run? Ron Tu's Run Dog Daycare? I apologize. Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, we'll come bug you. And then let's hope that Tad can wrestle up a forum on August 1.
We'll wrestle up a forum where the other...
Okay.
All right. Set through the office.
Okay.
You said all this time, just about?
Just about.
Was it enlightening and learning?
Oh, my God.
How's that my question?
Okay, we have next ordinance provisions. The first one is to set a public hearing for proposed changes to 2.2 and 2.3, 2.10 definitions, and campground performance standards. We have a draft document provided by...
Multiple bodies.
We've been... I think the question, from my perspective, is when are the board of selectmen going to call for a public... Call for a town meeting? Because that's where this has to go.
Can you educate us? It's just like, you know, when are you going to have this special town meeting?
I cannot, right now.
Okay.
Quite honestly, I didn't know we had a special town meeting scheduled.
We don't have one scheduled.
We don't have one scheduled.
I didn't think so.
So you can schedule it tonight, Phil.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's all the big...
Hey, Phil? Just so you know, we were working with Bentley to make a change to the campground ordinance, so that he would be able to do something starting in November. I thought he had come to you guys already to talk about having a special town meeting, because the option was for either we do it, or he goes through the whole ballot process and gets signatures and does all of that one stuff.
Yeah, there was a fair amount of discussion with Bentley about a special town meeting. There was no date set. And he had, and right now, I don't recall what it was, but there was a few items that Bentley's group had to put forward, and they were supposed to command, don't quote me, but I think they were supposed to come before the planning board with some requested revisions.
And he did it. He had done all of that.
Okay.
That's all taken care of.
Negotiated and changed to the ordinance. Where was that to go?
So then after that, I think it's supposed to go back to the VOS to possibly set up a special town meeting.
That's where we're at.
As far as scheduling one, not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, just go through our... We go through our process of having, by state law, we're required to have a public hearing. And then usually, then we refer it to you guys after we have that public hearing. We were just scheduling the public hearing for that. And we were wondering how quickly we have to do it, because we weren't sure when you guys were scheduled to... When you had your proposed special town meeting scheduled, but apparently, it hasn't gotten that far.
But we still can, could schedule a public hearing, right?
We should still schedule a public hearing, because we have to. The selectmen can't have their meeting until we finish our public hearing.
As long as there's no quirks.
As long as there's no quirks, you know, as long as nobody objects. But I mean, we did have a lot of... We had full representation of the industry there.
Well, like I said, I'd like to have this done before...
I would too. I want to get it over with.
What I'm trying to get at is...
But it's in the selectmen's hands.
So yeah, so before the camping season closes.
That's their issue. And you guys need only what, 14 days, or is it seven days to hold a special public hearing? A special town...
I think it's 14 days, because it don't have to be published twice.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Two consecutive weeks.
Yes.
It has to be published. So it's got to be at least 14 days or more.
I think we'll make it.
And the public, the special meeting has to be before the season closes.
Otherwise, he was in line.
If we don't have a public meeting, or a public vote, if it's denied, if he misses the deadline date, or if it's denied, he's gotta move all of his seasonal units off the property by.
November first.
Yeah.
That's why.
It's getting over all presumed.
That was in your consent agreement too.
Correct.
Under the current ordinance. November first is the drop dead date. It would have to happen before November first.
No, no, it has to happen sooner than that, because the current ordinance, and season ends September thirtieth, doesn't it?
Yeah, but we haven't instituted that ordinance. No, the current ordinance is, they have to, they have to be.
Have to be moved around every two weeks.
They could go out all winter, if they moved it around every two weeks, but to nine point. Under our current, under our proposed ordinance, it ended and closes at the end of October.
Right, but the way it currently reads, it's September, isn't it?
Well, yeah, and you know what will happen. Well, in the consent agreement, it was November, I think.
I believe it was, yeah.
And in our approval of his phases, it was November. It was November first in the approval phase.
So, what's our schedule for the tenth?
I can't get it published by the tenth, because the paper doesn't publish.
September fifteenth.
I can do fifteen.
Yeah, in the new ordinance, it's a twelve week period for the period from May fifteenth to September fifteenth, and two weeks for all other times. And we would, for some reason, I thought it was, I thought it was October fifteenth. And that would give them until November first to get stuff, because that's the two week period that I thought we were playing with. But the ordinance says September fifteenth.
Very honestly, if it's scheduled, there's no way that the code enforcement officer is gonna start citing it to September fifteenth.
No.
Because it'll clear up, I mean, the issue will be cleared up before it even gets to District Court, if you want it.
The issue's not September fifteenth, it's September twenty-ninth, actually. But we need to have a public hearing as soon as possible.
Okay.
The earliest date's gonna be the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, you have your meeting with the complaint committee, remember?
No, well, we had, that was on the agenda. I personally, my personal feeling is that getting, getting the ordinance provision is something that we need to do for.
It's more important, that is more urgent.
Well, we can do them both. I mean, I'll tell you, the public hearing on this will not be a one-on-one public hearing. I would imagine you're not gonna get a lot of flack.
Yeah, if it's first thing on the agenda, it should go.
First thing on the agenda, I can't believe it.
I don't think we'll have many people showing up to say anything about it. Something similar to what we had tonight, a minute or two minutes.
We didn't even have a minute. Nine o'clock, nine oh nine and.
Well, I don't think, I don't think.
I thought it was nine oh nine, it's seven oh eight.
Seven, anyway, it was quick.
I intended to make it a minute.
Okay.
Can I have, I can't do it, can I have?
We can make a motion, we have a public hearing for revision of ordinance on the campground on August twenty-fourth.
Okay, Tad, I apologize, I left my markup on the kitchen table. But the language, the language about tires, it should be wheels, not tires. The wheels may be removed.
It's tires that you guys said.
I understand.
If you wanna render it to wheels, I can understand that.
But the intent was the wheel.
Rim.
Rim, tire rim.
Yes, also known as a wheel.
Okay. Okay.
And there was a sentence that I thought, and I thought you need to be.
Well, you have to get them to me.
I'm sorry.
I gave you Axel.
No, Axel stays, don't go there.
Axel's gone.
Well, no, it was spelled incorrectly.
You and the spelling checker.
This school mom stuff is, I cannot wait to.
I just wanted you to feel that John's still here.
Okay.
Corinne had a baby, by the way, Corinne had her baby, she had a beautiful boy, and she'll be back soon.
That's great.
Praise the Lord.
We've been wondering when that was gonna happen.
Okay. You did, we made the motions, we have to vote.
Yes, yes, you do.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries unanimously.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we have any other events that need a public hearing, I suggest we also, for due diligence, for a special town meeting, have it the same night.
Well, the next item on our revised agenda is the Equestrian Center ordinance.
I suggest then we have a public hearing on the same night.
Don't you make a motion to that effect?
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, Marty and Marty and Rich. And I'll put the Equestrian ordinance on it.
For sake of discussion, that may entail a lot more than the campground.
That's gonna entail a lot more than the campground, because they're gonna come out swinging.
But that's fine, if they come out swinging and then wanna make changes, we can.
Yeah, I'm just not bringing that up.
You're preaching to the choir.
I'm sorry, I just, to me, that's something that has been, since before I was on the board.
Yes. You said in that meeting.
Has been desired, yes, I did.
That was one of your first meetings.
No, no, I wasn't even on the board.
I wasn't even on the board.
Yeah.
I was in the audience, in the old library here. So, it's, I understand the need to talk to the com board, the Compliment of Planning Board, but we have citizen requests for amendments to the land use ordinance for specific activities that we can only get done through a special town meeting, there's only gonna be one of them. We have a time crunch because of the existing campground ordinance. So, I think that we've got the question center, I, my preference would be to get that done.
That's why I brought it up, so we could cancel the meeting with the Compliment of Planning.
I'm not sure that we have to, and here's why. We hold the public hearing.
Yeah.
Hearings.
We had a hearing, a lot of people came out, we got a lot of angst, for lack of a better term, because I can't think of any other way to describe what happened in that meeting. And they went away, and they were going to come, they were going to craft up what they wanted to see in the ordinance. What we got back was essentially what we gave them. Now, I understand why that happened. I think if we have another public hearing, and the people from the Equestrian Centers come out, we can say to them, this is what happened, if you wanna work on it, you can work on it. However, it won't end up on the special town meeting, it'll have to wait until June before Rick shows up. Just because we have a town meeting, or just because we're going to have a public hearing, does not mean that it has to go on the agenda. We have pulled items in the past, and if this one, if it's nice and quiet and nobody shows up, then we'll put it on the public, on the special town meeting. If a lot of people show up, then they can work on recrafting the ordinance the way it was supposed to have been done originally, and we'll put it off until later, as long as we're working on it.
And another alternative, if we can have the public hearing and talk about it, another alternative is, they may say, well, we don't like X, Y, and Z about what you have now, but please present what you have now at a town meeting. At least get that into the land use ordinance, and then they have until June of two thousand eighteen to come up with amendments.
Yep, that's a balance.
Which I, to me, may be the best course of action, because then at least.
It's on the books.
It's on the books, we have, it's in the land use ordinance, it's something people can pull up on the website and look at and go, oh, gosh, the driveway requirements for the small equestrian center are egregious. And I, you know, I talked to the town planner about what I'd have to do to my driveway, and, you know, we need to get that changed.
Okay. Well, and also, from another practical standpoint, I no longer have to tell people who want to start an equestrian center in the R four district, we cannot have a commercial equestrian center in the R four district. And we've turned away two people, and we have one right now that has been waiting for two years for this.
All the more reason to go ahead and get something on the books.
And the ones who are going to be opposing it are people who have existing facilities, and it's not going to apply to them. Or, you know, they're gonna basically be grandfathers, essentially. So, it's not gonna apply to them, it's gonna apply to new guys who wanna come in but can't, because, you know, the ordinance has long never recognized equestrian centers, it's always just happened.
Okay.
And James hadn't denied permits.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Okay.
All those in favor of having a public hearing on the Equestrian, then a new language relating to Equestrian Centers in the land use ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Can we?
July twenty-fourth, possibly.
Can we ask the board of selectmen, or pass it to the board of selectmen, that when, that we're possibly looking for a special town meeting at their discretion?
We will at that time, on the twenty-fourth, when we have our public hearing, we'll do what we usually do, which is to.
Make a motion to blow it up.
Just move it up, just make a reference to the selectmen, and I send them the.
I've saved before, because they will have a meeting.
I'm not able to make a motion, but I like Marty's idea of notifying the board of selectmen as soon as possible.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
What the timeline would be, assuming we have the public hearing on the twenty-fourth, and then, I guess, take action one way or the other.
But I would say that we've already done that, because Phil is sitting in the audience, and he's gonna report to the board of selectmen on Monday?
No.
Second Monday in August will be our next meeting.
The second Monday in August, he'll be reporting to them the eighth, or the seventh, about this particular meeting.
And I've already notified the town manager, so I'll tell him.
I mean, just for the record.
No, I think it's, put it in the record that we need to make sure that we get the logistics squared away as best we can, so that the campground, assuming the public hearing goes well, and we don't find some need to further amend what we discussed, that that can get acted upon at a special town meeting before September twenty-ninth.
But the request of the town meeting is gonna come from Bentley, right?
No, it's gonna come from us.
It's going right by the selectmen, sir.
Because what we're doing is, and this is actually, the selectmen are aware that this is coming, because they have a consent agreement with Bentley.
Okay.
So, all parties have played, have done their job, and now we just forward to the selectmen to schedule that public hearing when they, excuse me, schedule a special town meeting when they're ready to do so, in a time and fashion, so that we won't have a conflict by November first.
The timing of November first, it's September twenty-ninth, Tad.
Yeah, but for their consent agreement, it's on November first.
I don't have a copy of their consent, that consent.
Yeah, it's November first.
Question along that lines. Do the selectmen need a public hearing for a town meeting, or not?
No, they have, I think you do have a public hearing for.
No, you don't, do you?
No.
I mean, for a special town meeting.
It's land use ordinance, it's, yeah, they don't need that.
They may have something else on it, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I don't know what they have.
Yeah, they may have different warrants.
They might have some other warrants on it, it's an opportunity for them to do something like that.
Yeah.
Or else everybody might enjoy just having a real quick town meeting, which doesn't happen very often.
Why not? Most of them are quick.
Okay.
Anyway, okay. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
I was going to ask, I think it's time to ask the planner of what other business theory is. I know that there's a subdivision road with a hammerhead called the sack.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to discuss with you, whether you guys wanna take this on. Right now, it's being proposed to the staff review committee. I'm gonna, he made out enough copies, I should have included in your packets, but I figured you had enough to focus on. But this was, this was something we're gonna bring up in other business. This gentleman's got an unusual situation, and I'll read you the maps. Maps are professionally done, so he's done his work. What we have is, we have a twenty-five foot right of way. This is one of those remnants from, probably the map's the most important. Twenty-five foot right of way that is existing, that goes out to a parcel of land, this is the Pitts property. And what has happened in that is a large piece of property, it's only served by this twenty-five foot right of way. And somewhere along the line, there was somebody, I think it was supposed to be exclusively for that property. But there was another parcel that was divided off at some point along the line, and there's an existing house that uses that. So, now we got a twenty-five foot.
Where does the existing house, Tad, and where's the trailer?
All right. I'm sorry, gentlemen, I should have brought the. Basically, what's happening is, you can see there's a property, see where the little line goes off here? All right, this is a property that has access off to here, this is a property that's an interior lot, the Buco property. See where it says Buco? There's a driveway that goes off that, they currently are using this up to that driveway point.
Okay, is that the?
That's the first house.
Or is it a house?
It's a house.
Okay.
That's the first house, then the second, this is the, then at the end is the Pitts property, which has been for sale, and this gentleman bought the property. When he was buying, he asked me, can I subdivide this? And I said, well, you really need a fifty-foot right of way in there in order to cut it into two lots. Right now, you have a right to develop that, but you're gonna have to bring the road up to a two lot, to a road standard. And he said, can I get, can I do it a three? And I said, I don't know how you can do that necessarily, but if you can fit it in twenty-five feet, a twenty-five foot right of way, if you can fit it in there, then, yeah, you can.
And what's this coming off, the Thompson Road?
It's coming off the Thompson.
Okay, this isn't somewhere.
It's one of the Pitts properties.
Pitts.
Now, I definitely can.
I'm confused too, I was under the impression that the purchaser had purchased an existing residence, not that we were talking about an undeveloped lot.
That's my understanding, it's an undeveloped lot. So, and he wants, he would like to divide it into two. If he divides it into two.
Totally not what I took away from reading.
That's gonna put three.
Yeah.
I think that's a different one. It might be a different one. Oh, no, that's a different one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, totally different, okay, what that was, very simply put. Okay, that's. You're right. That's Proctor Road, that was Ruffville Lane.
Yes, that's the one.
That's the one, this is another one. I thought I hadn't talked to you.
I'm sorry, okay, no, I'm, okay, so.
You're not dead on Ruffville Lane.
You're coming, that's what I was, that's what I was looking for.
Let me give you a report on Ruffville Lane, because that was the gentleman.
No, 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 let's.
You wanna stay focused on that?
Finish this one.
All right, so the gentleman is basically, what he would do in order to do this is, he probably would have to, he would get easements from from the Bucos, who said they'll give him an easement, grading easement, in order to do that, and he would build this to a three lot standard. He's gonna build the road to a three lot standard. Build the road to a three lot standard.
What's he gonna subdivide this eighteen eight into?
He would like to get another lot in there to pay for the road. Okay, so that's what this is here.
You want it one lot.
Yeah, well, that's his, yeah, and he can do more than one lot, but he's gonna have to extend this, because as you know, all lots have to have frontage on a town road or a private one, one of the two. So, he has to extend it to have the frontage that he needs. But right now, I mean, right now, he could divide it by doing this. All he has to do is put a property line here, which would actually kill. All he has to do is put a property line here, which would actually kill redevelopment of this, if he did that. If he does it now, he will, he will kill it. He will only, he will only get two lots out of it, which is all he's looking for.
So he only, he wants two lots out of this eighteen acres?
Yeah.
So, does he own this piece as well?
Yeah.
That's not a different...
It's all part of... It is a different piece, yes, I understand that.
It's all in peace, though.
But this, this is the eighteen acres or the entire thing?
The whole, the whole thing is eighteen acres, right?
Okay.
This, this literally, that's not a property line, it's a rotation.
It's a rotation. He and I, I already talked to him about that and said, okay, that's what you're gonna have to do, cause it's gonna have two hundred feet frontage there and this has to have two hundred feet frontage. He said, we designed it specifically so we do that. Where else Thompson Road is this? You know the Big S turn?
Yeah, I know where the curve is.
Okay, that's what's, it's, it's new there. It's above that. Phil, you know what I'm talking about? You know which lot that is, the Buco lot?
Who's that?
Buco lot, it's one of the Pitts lots. It's north of the, the one where, where the Pitts property is and then there's, he had another lot next door, another big piece of property.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you know who lives near there?
I, I don't know who's near there.
I don't, I can't remember who, who lives on the, on the road. But it's, it's, it's close to the Big S turn, okay? It's, it's north of the Big S turn. Here it is. In fact, he's showing the Big S turn. Oh, good, yeah, he did put it on there. If you look at the bottom right here, here's the Big S turn.
Here I am.
I'm already, I'm already so headless. So, um, yeah, that's the Big S turn and then it comes up like this. It's a nasty turn.
It is.
He's got good sight distance. He's got good sight distance. This has got terrible sight distance.
Okay.
Okay? So the issue he was asking was, will you, will you entertain, will the planning board entertain? I can get the easements for grading easements. Will you entertain a, you know, an eighteen-foot road so I can divide this?
I'm sorry, eighteen-foot road?
Yeah.
It's a twenty-five foot road now, isn't it?
Twenty-five foot right of way.
I'm sorry, okay, okay.
It's the issue.
Okay.
He's not gonna be able within the entire...
What is the land use ordinance say, the right of way or easement or whatever has to be for a two lot road?
It has to be a fifty-foot easement. But we've got this problem where we have a lot of, lot of right of ways that are less than that.
Yeah, like, I was...
And, and you know about this.
Well, it, it, I'm...
And I think the issue is, working with an existing right of way. What am I looking at? You're looking at five thirteen. You're so used to seven, seven, it's five thirteen. What, what the issue is, the way I've been interpreting it, is if you can fit the road within that, that twenty-five foot right of way, if you can meet our road standards with, with the private ways standards in that fifteen foot, in that twenty-five foot right of way, then, you know, why do we care? If he has the easements, he has the grading and the drainage and the snow pile easements for the apartments, which he can get, he says. He says he can get.
This will give it to him on one side and he'll get it from people on the other side.
The, if, if I'm reading this correctly, yeah. Five thirteen to C. Yeah. The width of the existing travel way shall be no less than fifteen feet. No, for three lots. We'll look at three lots. Remember, Buco's lot counts as one. Okay. That's one. That's, that's, okay, you're right. When he bought it, he didn't realize Buco had it.
I'm sorry, run this by me again?
There's going to be three, there would be, if he subdivides his property, there would be three lots. And it's eighteen feet. It goes to eighteen feet. He thinks, Paul, Paul did the design. Paul thinks he can fit it in. But there's going to be some slop of the, the side slopes of that into budding property and he said he can get grading easements for that.
Okay.
Well, if, if he can get grading easements, then he's going to meet the eighteen-foot requirement.
He's gonna meet the eighteen-foot requirement, he is not going to meet the fifty-foot requirement.
But this is after all.
They're asking, well, that's what they're asking for a waiver of.
It's not a waiver, it's, we have existing conditions. We have a number of these in town. Yeah. People are not gonna grant additional space in many cases. So we have existing right of ways that you can fit it in. It's kind of like saying, well, this is kind of, it's not a waiver, but if you can fit it in there. If you're building a new, new, a new private way, you gotta have a fifty-foot right of way. But you got existing right of ways that are less than that. If you can fit it within, within the existing right of way, should you be allowed to do it? And the feeling I have is, there's no way we're gonna solve this problem unless, unless we either allow that, and if they can't, they can't, then you can't do it. You can't do it, you know?
I, I, I'm... I gotta study, I'm flabbergasted based on something that involves my personal business.
I know you are.
And, and kind of...
I wasn't here then, okay?
I know, I, 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 well, no, that, that's not entirely true. You were for one of them.
Oh, two of them, yeah.
No, Fairfield.
Fairfield? No, I wasn't.
Oh, that was Aaron?
Yeah.
My, my initial response to this is that it's because of situations like this, that we're in situations like this. We keep allowing people to do something other than what the plant, the land use ordinance says. If the land use ordinance says fifty feet, then by golly, we should stick to fifty feet. Or we should change the land use ordinance.
No, I, I don't know what I have to recu, oh, I'm, I've, with, with, with the caveat that I own three roads personally, not, actually, not, not...
And all of them are fifty feet wide, as I recall.
No, I, I'm sorry, I own four roads.
One of them isn't.
Three, three of which are fifty foot wide. Well, at least two are fifty foot wide at all points.
That's true.
It, uh, I, I haven't had questions about why, if, if you have an, an existing road, which is being used by more and more residents, and you want to add on and you can fit all the other requirements in the, in the right of way or easement or strip lane the, the, the developer owns, why do you have to, one, why, why couldn't the planning board be accommodating in terms of the width of the right of way? Why, why do you need, why do you need fifty foot wide for an eighteen foot wide?
My, my reason for that is because that's what the ordinance calls for. We keep running into issues where, for whatever reason, there's a problem selling the property because the road's not wide enough. It doesn't have, it, it doesn't have whatever condition has to be out there, there's all, we keep finding these people who have problems with their property because we don't, they don't meet the standards. And they don't meet the standards because at some point in time the planning board allowed them not to.
Right.
And I'm simply saying...
No, 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 that, that's not entirely true. There, there are, there are plenty of instances where the, the roads were created, when, when, when the roads were created, they...
They weren't the standard size.
They were to those standards. The road, road standards keep, keep getting more and more restrictive.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
They have over the last thirty years, Ted.
Well, fifty foot's been standard in this town since nineteen, when they did the road ordinance, first did the road ordinance since then.
Yeah, but Ted, and how many times along the way you have a road? Okay, it was a woods road or it was whatever else that was accessible. Back then where some of these roads were classified as roads, you did, you didn't have many times a big fire truck like you have today. Or you might've turned a head just a little bit more than hay wagons or anything else, but they still classify it as a road. So I mean, uh, I've brought into that many times.
We're, we're not, we're, we're not talking about waiving the width of the travel ways. We're not talking about waiving the requirements to have drainage along the side of it. What we're, all we're talking about is they, is allowing someone to, to, in this example,
Utilize it?
Own a twenty-five foot wide easement, travel easement.
That's not an easement, it is, it is own and fee.
Okay, own and fee simple, a twenty-five foot strip and acquire easements for, uh, grading, grading easements on, of, of budding property, uh, in order to satisfy drainage requirements and the like. I, 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 I am not an objective observer. I, I previewed that, but I, I don't see...
Well, there was a reason why when you reached a threshold of three lots, we went to fifty feet. And what was that reason?
The reason was very simply because it didn't stop at three lots. What happened and then you came, well, it kept... Four, five or six. What I think happened, what I can piece together, planning board recognized that we had a lot of people who had twenty or thirty foot right of ways or were putting in small right of ways. Cause originally I think you could have a right of way for two lots that was thirty feet wide. And that's why I think we saw a lot of twenty-five and thirty feet lots, uh, thirty foot easements or, or right of ways. And then what happened is when you got up to the point where you wanted to have more than that, you had to go up to a fifty. I think the problem that was happening was you had family parcels that people were only putting in a thirty foot right of way. And for themselves or for a kid. And then the rest of the kids come along, or the grandkids come along and they want to develop, they want a lot out there and they want a lot out there. But they restricted themselves down to thirty feet and they can't fit. They can't fit the road in there. You know, they might have ten. They can't fit the road in that fifty foot right of way for reasons of topography, for reasons of drainage, for any number of reasons. And so what they've done is they've shot themselves in the foot in the early stages, you know, and destroyed their ability to, to, to give only to the kids. And so I think that's, from what I can piece together, and the planning board said, let's make sure this doesn't happen anymore. Let's make sure that they start off with fifty feet when they create a new right of way. They start off with fifty feet, so the expansion potential is always there. The kids can subdivide this, you know, in, in time and the land isn't restricted. That's what the reason was for a fifty-foot right of way, which was sort of a protective of the property or permission.
So, so this, this is, right now this is a driveway, basically? Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a driveway...
It goes only to the Bucos.
I'm sorry?
It only goes to the existing house on the Buco property.
Right.
And then it's a woods road after that.
It's a woods road after that. So, so it's not, it, it's not a...
It's not serving any, except the woods.
It's not one that's serving multiple existing houses.
No.
And they're, and they are asking for a waiver of the fifty foot.
Yeah. He's got a right to go out there right now and build on that as a two, as a two lot. Because we, if, you know, because if...
I, I, no, I, I understand.
You understand. And he's saying, you know, he asked me, can I get three? And I said, if you could fit our road profile in there, maybe you can. And he did the analysis, he said, I can fit it in there. The problem is that I'm gonna have, you know, see the toe of the slope maybe outside of the, of the twenty-five foot. And I can get an easement for that.
Well, let's do some...
I would prefer you to, I would prefer you to buy this from Pitts, who's selling to you this, who's selling you this land. But this is not owned by Pitts. This is owned by Pitts, but this isn't. And this, these people aren't willing to sell at all. They don't wanna give easements or anything.
I'm sorry, if, if they're not willing to give easements, then...
No, no, they're on this side, on this side. Cause I...
On this side they are?
Yeah.
But this, where's this first dwelling? Is it over here on, off the Thompson Road?
It's right here, yeah.
So you're already serving one house, so if you had to...
Yeah, it already serves one house.
So the minute you go to two lots here, you're servicing three.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Right now he's got, this application he's got performed is for two lots. It's a, it's a fifteen-foot road. He says, I can wait easy. Can I do it? And I know I've got the restriction because of, you know, fifty-foot right of way requirement. Can I, can, can we work, can we work with that twenty-five foot? So, are you willing, are you willing to just bring it to three lots?
Yeah, it, it, but that's the problem. Three lots says it's fifty feet.
Fifty feet, that's why I made that...
Right, and that's...
And he's talking about actually putting another lot in. It's gonna end up being four lots.
No, 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 three.
No, no, just two lots.
There's only, there's only two lots that'll be served by you, you're saying by dividing it into one. Dividing the last lot into two courses.
This, this lot is served off Thompson Road. This lot has a house on it now.
Yeah, and he's gonna...
This, this whole thing, he wants to, he wants to...
So if, if he wants to put in, if he wants to divide it, he's gonna end up having to have a fifty-foot right of way. That's what the required, that's what people...
And that's what he did here on his property. Where he's dividing, he put a fifty-foot right of way. Just a question, you gentlemen, cause I've got this, this board says now we don't wanna look at that. We're, you know, this is before me on the site, on the staff review committee for a two lot, two lot, uh, type of way.
This, this is not a pre-existing, um,
Condition?
Road. It, it, yeah, it, it, it's a driveway up to one point and a woods road after that.
It's the legal access to the back lot. And it's not an easement, it's, it's not a right of way, it's, it's in fate.
Yeah, and he owns it in fee simple, okay. And no one else has the right to use it.
Just you calling me. I know I'm pushing, I know I'm, I know Rich, I am pushing it.
See, the main, you made the exception to the, the rule, anybody's gonna come in after that that is under the same conditions. So long you did it before, you set a precedent.
That's true. And at the same time, I would also say, the objective is to make sure that you have an adequate size, adequate right of way in order to put in a road, to maintain a road. That's the intent of having a fifty-foot right of way. Not because it's, we, fifty is a magic number, it's because...
One of the, one of the issues, based on personal experience, is if you got something that's an absolute straight shot like this, it's a whole lot easier to stay right on, you know, whatever the strip lane you own. If you have a strip lane that's got a couple of dog legs and you've got the, the turning radius requirements, it may become, uh, well, it may be just plain impossible to hit the road on a, on a twenty-five foot.
Yeah, considering most easements that, that are serpentine do not, do not follow horizontal alignment design standards that you have for roads. They don't have tangents in between the curves, you know, they don't wanna have the proper radiuses.
The only thing I think of or seeing here is along the way. Also, depending on where the woods roads start and this comes along the way, the length of that, we've talked about before, is actually having either like a pull-up or a push point for snow or anything else. By a narrow road.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, it's not a narrow road, it's an eighteen-foot road. But you're right, where are you gonna throw the, where's the snow thrown up? Right? And we have winter like last winter and that's why you, I mean, you know, I, I know you can have easements for drainage and easements for, for snow throw. It's an easement, and if you can't have that easement, then it can't fly.
I'm just throwing it, no, no.
It can't fly.
Um, I'm already blanked up at this point. There's, there's something else here that I have a question about.
Yes.
There is a, the applicant is requesting a waiver of, of the requirement for test pits for soil investigation and confirmation of installed... for soil investigation and confirmation of installed materials in existing roads.
Yeah, he can request it.
Okay, because I, I have a diametrically opposed response to that.
I know, and after my experience with Proctor Road, I agree. Or after my experience with Tred Sort of, I agree.
Should we even be discussing this, because it's not.
No, he was going to staff for the, he's going to staff for the, the application. Because the application is for two, two lots, some of it. I didn't say.
A, a, a two, two lot is subject to staff review, not planning board.
Correct.
But they're coming to the planning board because they're asking for, you know, effective variance. Uh, variance has to come from.
Well, it's not a variance, it, it's whether, because you can't give a variance for a road. There's no variance procedure for roads in ZBA.
ZBA, I thought there was.
Not for roads. I'm sorry. ZBA's variances only deal with setbacks. And I deal with a lot of sizes that are too small.
Also usage. Oh, then, then how, how do we, how would we even do this?
The only thing you can say is that if you can fit the road within that right of way, then.
Then we.
It's an existing condition.
Do we have the ability to, it's existing condition.
Existing condition. And it won't be the last we run out to.
Okay, my thought on it? No.
Because legally, you can, he, legally, you can't do it any, I mean, if we, if we were to be that way, remember, it's thirty feet for one lot, you know, for back road to one lot. And he's got a twenty-five foot, two lots, two lots. I, I, you know, I find myself in a position, and I, I look at that and I say, well, this is.
Has he been closed on it?
Yeah, he's closed. He understood at the time. I said, you only can get two, one lot back there.
Not if he only has a twenty-five foot and there's a thirty foot requirement.
I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, in a situation like that, I think I'd be hard pressed to deny a person to have access to the, their property.
That's where they could call hardship to the ZBA.
Yes.
Again, it's usually deals with setbacks, Marty, it doesn't deal with road standards. And it's not me, Marty, it's the way that the variances are, are, are written in the state law, the enabling legislation, variances deal with setbacks. They don't deal with, with standards like road standards and so forth. Variances are created by the planning board, I mean, I mean, I shouldn't say variances. Exemptions are granted by the planning board. Planning board already has exemptions for private ways, as you all know.
I feel that, I, I.
I'm looking at this.
Because I have to recuse myself from voting on this.
Right.
Um, for the very simple reason that I would be delighted to set a precedent to grant exemptions for personal reasons.
Yeah, it's probably a good reason for recusing yourself.
I think I better look into it myself.
And then, so, I, I'm looking at this going, it's, it's a fifty foot right of way for two lots. And it's a thirty foot right of way for one lot.
Right.
I'm not, so you're gonna deny a person access to the property? For five feet? Well, no, for, for fifty foot right of way. Yeah, this is two lots. I mean, that's the point, but, you know, I, I, I don't think I, I don't think we can, I, I don't think we, I can morally deny a somebody the right to, to build one single family dwelling on a piece of property they own, in which they own the right, the, the, the access in, you know, in fee. How can, how can we do that?
I've remembered.
Driveway and a road.
Well, the difference between driveway and a road is that he needs, he needs, um, he needs access on, all, all lots gotta have access, and gotta have frontage on a private way or a public street. He ain't gonna do it on a public street. So that's what he's gonna do on a private way.
Okay, is there a name to this already, private way?
I don't know. I don't think it's got a name.
Well, I mean, I just.
Guy's name's Chad Morsai.
No, I'm just saying.
No, it doesn't have a name.
Because turn around, why I've asked it that is because turn around under nine, nine-one-one, and all private ways or anything else.
Agreed.
You had to have a, a, a name to it. So I mean, even before.
I'll find out, but, you know.
I mean, even before we even do anything else there, you gotta be able to have a nine-one-one to.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not worried about that, frankly, because I, I know that Wendy's probably got one. Because she's very, very thorough on that.
No, I'm going by, because of, uh, Buca, I mean, uh.
Yeah, it's got a name.
If, if, if Buca, no, because it could be, they can be treated as their driveway. Oh, no, you said they're an interior lot.
That's right.
Okay, so it's gotta have a name.
Gotta, yeah.
Gotta have it.
It's gotta have a name, I just don't know what it is. I haven't been on the site.
Okay, well, I, I.
I guess.
I guess the big question, I mean, because this is, this is an already existing private way. It's up to the end of the Buco property.
No.
No.
It goes to here.
It goes all the way, it goes all the way down here.
It's a woods road though, for some reason.
It's a woods road from here to there.
At, at what point though, does it become, is it a woods road?
Where the driveway peels off here.
So at, at that, that's as far as it goes, from here down, it's just a woods road.
This is, yeah, this is.
Oh, why couldn't they have it all the way down here?
Well, and he does, and remember, back, back when his dad did this, or when Pitts's father did.
Was a lawyer.
Was a lawyer, and I, not, obviously not a land use law.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, if, if it had been built all the way down through here, it would be a different story.
Yeah, but he also was dealing with home and waterhouse.
Okay, he was dealing with.
Twenty-five feet is ridiculous, right?
I, I was just, if, if. If it had been built all the way, if it had been developed and built all the way down here, I'd feel differently about it. But it hasn't, it's been, it's been built to that.
No, it's been built as a driveway, yeah. And it's a woods road, as they say. But it's, it's owned in fee by this property. If it were wider, we would say it's a, we would say it's in a state law.
Time back, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is, is it possible to, to meet the fifty foot requirement to own twenty-five feet and have a twenty-five foot easement?
I don't see where that would work, because it's twenty-five feet from the center of the road, isn't it? It's twenty-five feet.
No, absolutely, no, absolutely not.
Really?
Really? That, that I can tell you.
That I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that one.
Wait, whoa, 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 what are you saying? What are you saying? That it doesn't have to be in the center?
No.
Yeah, it does.
No.
It does not.
No, it don't, look at paneling.
Oh, God.
I, I.
That's the specific example I had.
I will tell you, because.
How's that for throwing it?
No, it, it, it.
Guys, could you tell me what, what ordinance it, I, I will tell you, in the, in the town road construction ordinance, which is a town road construction ordinance, it says, the center line of a road, of a drive, of, of any private way is gonna be the center line of the right of way.
Let's put it this way, probably some of this came about because of that.
Okay, let me, let me ask it, let me ask my question a different way.
No, you're right, very much. The ordinance is same because of the disasters.
What if he owned a twenty-five foot in fee simple? And you had a twenty-five foot easement? And the center line of the road ran right down the line separating.
The easement and the right of way?
The easement, no, the easement and the, what you own in fee simple.
That would be a center line, and you would have enough width.
Yeah. That could be interesting.
Yes.
But that would be dedicated only to that road, and, and your setbacks would have to be from the easement. So you would be essentially creating a right of way. Because your setback, building setbacks would be from the edge of the easement.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So you're basically transforming that easement into a right of way.
I don't understand the difference between.
It's really.
So you, the only other difference is.
Fine, it's like a razor, and, and nobody ever is on it. Except, the thing is, from a land use standpoint, when we look at, 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 at a right of way that has a road on it, we say, your setback, your housing setback is from a.
Forget the gobbledygook.
It's not gobbledygook.
It, 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 pretend, just, simple business proposition.
Are we speaking for you, or are we speaking for this kid?
We're speaking for this kid.
Okay, if he can get, you're saying, if he can get fifty foot easement.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying, in a twenty-five foot, he, he owns this, he owns twenty-five feet. If he can get, that's, that's right here, if he can get a twenty-five foot easement.
From Buco.
From Buco and whoever exists.
Well, yeah, of course he could. Then, then he could combine that, sure. But I'm.
Well, I, I'm sorry, it was.
Do you want me to tell him that? Go, go get him. Go get more, get, go get more right of way.
Tell, tell him the ordinance says he has to have the fifty foot right of way, and after, and, and have him approach them, say, can I get a twenty-five foot right of way here? Because the ordinance requires me to have a fifty foot strip of land. And if I could do that, that'd be the center line.
You can have to buy that from them.
Yeah, well, yeah, he.
They're not gonna give it to him, they're not buying, he's gonna have to buy it.
But it also takes care of all.
That's different than throwing, that's different than having toe of slope or having the snow throw easement. That's a totally different animal.
But also takes. I, I can't take care of utilities and everything else.
And it takes it, frankly speaking, it takes it out of their house, it takes it out of their land. For all effective purposes. So I, you know, I could talk to him about, but what you're telling me, what the board is telling me. Tell me if I'm wrong. What? Yeah, you have, you're just recusing yourself from making a fisher. Told me a lot. Um, what the board is telling me is that, that right now, you don't feel comfortable with this. If you can fit in the twenty-five foot road, you can do it. Kind of twenty-five foot, that way you can do it.
Roy said to me, he says, let him do it, and the highest says.
I have the same problem. But I'll tell you this, I know it says fifty feet, but for, for this, for access to one property, to be able to use your property.
But not for one property, because he's gonna subdivide that back lot, and he's.
Not gonna be able to subdivide that back lot.
He, you've already said he plans on putting, dividing that lot.
If you give him this, this right to do that. He's gotta put that in anyways, for his purposes. Because you see, he, he can't make it in a state lot. He can't make it in a state lot because it's not exclusive to him. He, if he could make it in a state lot, yeah, I think he'd be happy with it, but he can't, because it's, Buco already has rights on it. So he can't, he can't make it in a state lot. And I'm just making, you know, I'm gonna give him a permit, and you guys can, you know, cite me, but I'm gonna give him a permit to be able to, to get to his property. Because I think he's got a right to do that.
But that's, that's staff review.
Yeah.
Which, which is.
Not us.
Not us.
Well, it's a power that you grant to staff, you can take it away from staff at any time.
Well, you be bad enough, I'll slap you, I'll do well.
I don't think at this point, any of us wanna take it away from him.
I know, you wanna give him more.
But if he, if he, if he wants to divide that road, he's gonna have a problem. When he, when he comes back and says he wants to divide this lot and create that.
He knows, I, I've had this topic, he knows. He knows, that, you know, the.
His ability is that he can.
Doing his homework ahead of time.
He's doing his homework.
You can fade him that.
That's not, he likes math.
You can fade him that the planning board would be more comfortable if that were a true fifty foot.
Of course they would, and he's.
And if he's gonna.
Would he have in this conversation if he could?
If he's got eighteen acres, he can get more than two or three lots if he makes that road wider, it's his benefit. I'm sure you had that conversation.
I've had this conversation.
That's not like math. Don't take that far ahead.
A lot of folks don't think about that far ahead, which is why the planning board said, let's go with fifty instead of thirty.
Is.
Anything else? Do you have any other things pending?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, what, where, where did the end of this, I apologize. It's gonna, it's gonna remain at the staff level?
Yeah, you guys are. So in other words, he's gonna have to have fifty feet to go to three.
To go to three, yeah.
Is that consensus of the board?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I think, to go to three, he needs fifty feet.
Here we are, so it's easy. Mr. Vice Chair, you gotta take over.
Yeah, we're not restricting him from using his property.
But if he's gonna subdivide it for two lots, and there's already one lot at the beginning, that's a different scenario.
But he can also do the easement the way that is. And that will turn around suffice, I mean, that's a new option that he didn't think of.
He, he can go to them and try and get that taken care of.
We talked about it, he was just, he was concerned about being able to afford that easement.
Okay.
Anything else?
We have, we have that. No, I have a question.
No, no, wait a minute, I, I'm, I'm sorry, there is the, the Rock Road? Rock Lane? Rock Road?
Rock Road.
Rock, Rock Road?
Rock Road. Um, Ruckville Road on Proctor Road, Proctor Lane. Ruck Road, Ruckville Road was a subdivision, three lot subdivision was approved in two thousand. And Marty, I think you were on the planning board at the time, you and Tom were on the planning board, because I've never seen your signatures on it. Um, it, it was standard, it was a small subdivision, three lots, eighteen foot road, cul-de-sac, uh, off Center Cul-de-sac. And it was off to Proctor Road. I received a call from Dave, actually, I received a call from Dave Trotter saying that, that Jim Nagel says that he, he won't give me a, a clean bill of health on selling this lot until you approve the road. I said, me approve the road? Well, okay, let me look it up, Dave. So I looked it up and talked to Jim, I said, Jim, what's wrong with the road? He says, what road? And I said, what, 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 what's it like? And he said, well, let's go for a ride. And we took a ride, and the road is, um, the road at the time had an apron, but, um, it's, didn't look like it was actually completed. The cul-de-sac didn't follow the configuration of, that was approved by the planning board. It was a Paul Gaboy design. And he added, you know, made that fit, you know, the sixty foot outside and fifty-five inches, you know, fifty-five outside radius, but it wasn't built that way. And there were large rocks, kind of poking their way up through that. And it was covered with grass, it was covered with weeds. So it was like, this hasn't been maintained in how long? And the road was only, the travel was only fourteen feet wide. And so he said, okay, let's say, look at this, and we looked, looked at the application, the, the approval. And the approval said you had two years to do it, to get it done, and it had to be certified, you know, it had to be inspected.
Two years or three years?
Two years, it's usual, it's the usual thing, and two years to complete the subdivision. Standard in our subdivision ordinance. And just, you know, signed by Dan Fleishman. And, uh, and I told Dave Trotter very simply that, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna dig around the road. I have no idea, I'm not gonna do any city analysis or anything like that. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna look through the files and see if I can see the inspection reports. There were no inspection reports. Called up Paul and said, Paul, where, did you do any inspections on this? He said, nope. He never inspected, was never asked to come out and do any, any evaluations. I said, okay. And then I checked with the town, and the town never got two percent inspection fees. And at that time also, I believe that, um, Mike, uh, DeLuca did the inspections, road inspections, and I found nothing from Mike DeLuca on inspections, so it didn't appear that the road had been inspected. Mike DeLuca was the town engineer at the time, DeLuca Hoffman Engineers.
That's right.
And, um.
So you're back to start all over again?
Well, the, yeah, I said, you know, it doesn't look like it's been built to standard, but I tell you what, you get an engineer certified, give you a seal that it has been built to town standards, and that'll be good enough for me. All that's happened is, I guess, the, the owner went down and scarified it, and added more material, but hasn't completed it. And, um, and the, the problem with it is that it's been fifteen years since the two-year time limit has, has expired. And it was done in two thousand.
Expire some issue with it being a hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac?
There isn't a cul-de-sac.
If you put the cul-de-sac in, it wouldn't, it would, would, you failed to meet the setback.
No, that's another one. You're mixing that up with black dog. It's a different one. I'll get to that in a second.
I, I'm looking at this going, that permit expired fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
You have to resubmit and meet the current standards.
Exactly.
Ouch, come on.
Yeah, you're right, fifteen years.
He's a brand-new applicant, he doesn't have a permit, he's never had one. If he wants to put in a subdivision, come and submit all of the information.
Subdivision is already done, lots have already been, you know.
Then you come in and you put in the road information to town standards.
Subdivision is done, the lots are recorded, there is one dwelling on the road.
Well, give an example when you had Brad Mason. He had to, uh, put a road in by, called by people, they refused it anyway because they wanted to dig up the entire road and they would not take core samples.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think an engineer is gonna certify this road.
Well, you wouldn't take core samples.
I don't think we should be asking one to, it's fifteen years old.
Well, what do you want me doing?
I told you what I think, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I, 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 I think that the road needs to meet the standards set forth in the original permit.
See, I, I disagree because that permit doesn't exist anymore, it expired. Why should he have to meet something that is fifteen years old? Well, we're not, when we're telling this other guy, you didn't have to meet the standards from fifteen years ago, you have to meet the current standards.
Yeah.
You have to meet the, the fifty-foot setback and not the twenty-five foot, the thirty foot setback.
Standards haven't changed for, the standards, the road construction standards haven't changed in the last fifteen years, seventeen years. They haven't changed since the nineties.
I thought they changed, you said, because it turned out.
Now, back in the seventies is when you said that the change.
The, the, the last one was nineteen ninety-six, that was the last change.
I just, I just think that, given the fact, you know, if it had been a year or two years, I might be willing to say, okay, fine. This is fifteen years ago. This isn't even a subdivision.
Trees grow fat then.
The fact that, the fact that there's, there are lots out there that, that were going to be, this, this isn't a subdivision, there's nothing out there. There's no houses out there.
Well, remember that anytime there isn't a subdivision, well, there is a house out there.
There's one, at the very beginning.
Does, does the person who originally created the subdivision own all of the remaining lots?
Correct. Yes.
How many other?
Two. And they were on the market and that's, this came up. This came up because, um, because they were gonna have a closing. And the appraisers came in and went, wait a minute, there doesn't seem to be a road, and they came in and started talking to us, you know. They talked to Jim, and then Jim referred it to me, and that's when.
Well, can't the, can't the people go out there and look to see there is no road? Instead of having somebody else go out there and?
Maybe, who?
One of the market people.
Well, yeah, the market first put a sign up, so I assumed he saw it. Well, you know, what it is, is it's, it's grassed over a road.
It's not a woods road.
No, no, it's, it's, there's.
Can he drive his car all the way out there?
Yeah, you can drive your car, you can't go around, it's a kind of hammerhead.
Well, no, I mean, if you've got all those rocks in the middle of it, you take a low-sun car, he'll find out the road isn't good.
You know, in this market, buyer beware seems to have gone out the window. Because this kid who called, who had his appraisers come in and was gonna buy one of the lots.
I gotta go along with, with Rich, I think he's gonna submit another application, fifteen years. And it's not two weeks, two months, or two years, it's fifteen years.
It's a decade and a half. At, at some point, we, we have to say, okay, we're not gonna be that ridiculous anymore. And I, and I, this is definitely a time we should be submitting that.
Okay, I will tell the government, I will notify the owner. Point one, I want someone to reappear for renewal of this subdivision.
What I hear from Rich is it's not even renewal, it's a, it's a new, it's a new application.
Yeah, you know, if he had come back two weeks, two months.
I understand that.
You know, I need, I need an extension of, you know.
The reality, at the same time, the reality is that we do have lots of record that are out there, that are recorded in an alphabet. And this is what, you know, frankly speaking, this has been a perpetual problem in town.
So it is a perpetual.
You know, yeah, it would be kind of a revision, it's a renewal of, you know, when you really come down to it. Um, but the, and it's not gonna be any different than what I told, you know, the listing agent, I said, give me an engineer to certify this thing, it's built to standard, and if not, they give you a plan on how it can meet those standards.
And I would like to discuss getting plans that are built to standard, not as-built. When we say it has to be a, you have to have gravel or you have to have something else underneath there. I am so tired of seeing, well, yeah, I took their word for it, that they did what they were supposed to do. No, prove that you did it.
I, what I have is I have a system in place to inspect the subgrade. We have engineers that we send out to inspect subgrade, grab, grab samples if necessary, and if there's a question on the quality of the material, to do a SIP analysis.
And we have, we have engineers in town that say, oh, yeah, I didn't bother inspecting it, I just, yeah, it was as-built here.
Okay, but, yeah, the, the point is that, understand two things, number one is on road construction, we get a, we get a fee and I have a, I have a set of engineers, I alternate the set of engineers who I will use. We'll send out, they will send a resident engineer out to do it. That's what happening, that's what happening up at the, at the cottages.
Mm-hmm.
That place is the most inspected place, I've got three, there's three inspectors up there. Every single one of their drawdowns, I have a monthly drawdown meeting in which we go over the things they've done and they're, they're, they're subscribing to the, to the ordinance. Completion and, and, and ground and this grade on it, they, they run a real good tight ship on that. And we have, and so I have regular inspections going on. In other subdivision roads, I'm gonna have the same level, not at that kind of intensity, but we've done that before. And we have, have inspectors on it. On site plans, it's less so that way. And, um, but remember one thing, in site plan, now that we're on site, now that everything is gonna be site planned, there's also the requirement for, for bond or for performance assurances and inspections. Whereas there wasn't that provision in the condition of use process.
Okay.
So now we have a uniform process that's for, for, for all site points, okay? And we're stepping up on enforcement on this because, and the other thing we're trying to do is when we get illegal lots, we're trying to do something about them now. Frankly speaking, the legal advice of the past was, well, don't worry about it until somebody tries to draw a, or a building permit. But you know, the, the problem with that is that, you know, you've got some poor.
Well, we had that problem with, with my two friends over at the fire station who sold a piece of lot to each other.
Right.
Kind of messed up.
I don't wanna get into that, but I mean, we have, we have, we have them occurring all the time. And I had it in my, in my office the other day where we had an illegal lot. And the, the practice back a while ago was, you don't do anything until somebody has a building permit. Well, somebody doesn't ask for a building permit until they bought the lot. And then usually, quite frankly, it's some young bride, six months pregnant, and this is their first house, and you find out, oh, jeez, that's not a legal lot. And the one you're talking about is right up that alley.
Which one?
The one with the hammerhead instead of the cul-de-sac, remember that one?
I thought that was Ruck, Ruck.
No, that's Black Dog Lane.
See, there's a lot of them, don't get confused with.
It's just a lot, it's unbelievable. Black Dog Lane is one where literally we had, and I think you guys got involved in that. That was the one you were gonna have that special meeting for a letter of no action.
Yeah.
Remember that? That was about two weeks ago or a week ago.
Two, two, three weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
That was the situation.
Dad's feeling, he, he's feeling so much better from his personal perspective now.
Are you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Feeling invigorated?
I'm feeling great, I mean, if you've been granting waivers here and there and staff reviews flexible about this and that, then I, yeah, I feel good.
No, they're not that flexible.
Oh, just, just not with me?
Not with you, no, no, it's personal, right? I have never encountered you in this situation anyway, so.
Yeah.
You maybe, but no, Black Dog is, is the one where the, um, basically it's the same sort of thing. And this one was nine months, I thought she was gonna pop in the middle of the meeting. We have a guy who's moving to Texas, he's sold this house, he's the third owner of this property.
Yeah, this, this, this one is, is.
This is the.
This, this one is one where we need to figure out a solution.
This is one where.
He's the third, the third owner of the house.
Yeah.
And, and he, and he was trying to sell it and the bank.
They had it sold, yeah.
The, the, he, he had it sold, but the, the bank's due diligence discovered that there was supposed to be a cul-de-sac instead of a hammerhead. And if you put the cul-de-sac, then the house didn't meet the setback requirements. It did from the hammerhead that was actually built.
No, see, I'm saying, the hammerhead, it didn't mean it from the hammerhead because the, the guy who built it didn't follow the sin.
What, but, I mean, the, the bottom line is that the place has been bought and sold twice already. And, and this poor guy is moving to Texas and.
Well, I think this poor guy has a case against it, against the title company that originally, that originally did it because they didn't do their.
But it was the bank's title company, he didn't have his own title insurance.
But, but it, I, I mean, I, I, the case for what, Rich?
I'd be suing the title company, they allowed me to buy a piece of property that they, that I could not get clear title to.
Well, somebody gave him a clear title, previous title companies.
Not just him, it happened twice.
Yeah, I know. It's a screwed up mess.
It, it's a screwed up mess.
What happened was the subdivision shut in.
I, I think that is, I, I think that, that is a clear example where we, we need to come up with a solution.
And I, and I would agree with that.
Not.
Because this is nothing that they did, it's not.
It's not his fault.
It wasn't, and there's no good way out of it because, you know, the obvious solution is that the owner who still owns, the subdivision owner, who still lives in the, in the house at the end, still owns and still has rights to the road and still could, in fact, make the conveyance is necessary to make it a conforming lot. However, he's got like five liens against him, including the federal government, the state government, and us.
Yeah.
So there's no way that those parties would allow any conveyance, out conveyance of property because it requires an out conveyance of property. So that'd allow any out conveyance of property.
Through no fault of the poor guy moving to Texas.
Exactly.
Yeah, so then you're right, that is, that is an issue.
We, 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 we need to come up with a solution.
A lot of it is just more enforcement, more, 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 more process and watching these things occur. And also rigorous, rigorous intervention when something goes wrong.
But, but, but my, my point, in that specific instance.
Where is this?
Black Dog.
Black Dog Lane.
Where's that?
Off of Old Post Road.
But, but the, the, the bottom line is.
It's a one, two, three, it's a four lot subdivision, it was approved by the planning board. And then when this problem came up with, they, they did not, they built the house too close to the cul-de-sac, they changed it into a hammerhead, so he met the setback.
Is that the town, the same one that turned, we had problems with, with him and never paving the road?
Well, he didn't have to pave the road, that was a four lot subdivision.
No, I'm just saying we had one down off Old Post Road, which.
No, that was Haley Road. That was Haley Road.
Okay, we're gonna get thrown out here in ten minutes, do you have anything else?
So, I, I, I have a question. Did you get the, the marijuana thing that I sent back, is that, is that gonna work?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you on that.
No, no, I just wanted to find that.
Okay, we'll just send it out.
So we'll give that, I'll give that to Sim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we adjourn so we'll go off the record?
We, now, real, real, real quick on the, on, on, on the record. I, I understand the idea that we're sending things out with property tax bills because that's a, a cost-effective way of doing it. But what, what about people who are renting property that move in a rental?
It's, it won't, it will not touch them, it'll touch more not out of, here's the thing, it will, it will make. Be more inclusive and include business owners who don't live in rentals, but it will not, it will not touch the renters in the rent.
I don't think it's, I don't even know who, how you would find out who the renters are.
Only by address.
You, you send it to the.
No, you go by school, because it turns out a school has a property.
But registration.
And not everybody has kids in the school who rents, yeah.
I'm just using that as.
No, you'd have to use blood registration either way.
Yeah, everybody knows.
I mean, it's a simple fact, it is a simple fact, guys.
You're gonna have a situation where a mail-in survey has a three to five percent return rate, period. That's what it is, if you get up to eight, I'd just be dancing in the streets. But that's the usual, so three to five percent.
If we get more than fifty responses, we're gonna be doing really well.
Well, I think, I think we're gonna send out, what, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred?
We're gonna send out that many?
I think there's that many properties.
Okay. For some reason I was thinking that there aren't much, there aren't thousands of households. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of other stuff, but you're right. So we might get.
Hundred.
We might get a hundred.
Hundred and fifty.
If we get, if, we're not gonna get a ten percent return or, or a nine percent return, if we get a hundred of them, we'll be doing well.
The only way we might do it better is if we made a return postage, if we don't.
I don't wanna pay them the setback. You're gonna have to send your property tax bill in to get the payment paid or not because you've messed up.
And so you include in the property tax.
So, you know what, give them a lottery chance, if you reply and you win, you send in your reply with a number and we pick that number, you get a free bail.
And the date was Roger Moore.
Courtesy, courtesy of our friend Billy.
Okay, it's definitely time to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Move.
Second, all in favor? Okay, show them, get the camera show off.
On time, who moved it?
I did.
Who said that?
I did.
I, fifty-three.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Roger and Roger at nine fifty-four, nine, nine fifty-five, fifty-six, something like that. Doesn't matter.